Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to order. Eileen, can we have the opening statement, please?
Yes, you may. Howell Township Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, September 6, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 19, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 19, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 19, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the fire protection code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits, which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TD-77.
As everyone may be aware, former Mayor Gatto has resigned from the board, so we've done a little bit of shuffling. Mr. Boyle has moved up to a regular member to replace Mr. Gatto. Mr. Seaman has moved from alternate number one, I'm sorry, alternate number two to number one, and we have a new alternate, number two, Dave Everett. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, and at this time, I would ask if you could step over. We have to swear you in.
That's already on, Steve.
If you want to pull this like this to make it even easier. I state your name.
I, David Everett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under your authority, people, so help me God. I do further solemnly swear that I will impartially or generously perform all the duties of the office of the Howell Township Planning Board according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. If someone wants to subscribe, please welcome aboard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please, right there. Thank you. No, you don't have to. Oh, yeah, I guess you can. Nobody else does. Thank you.
Okay, with that being done, Eileen, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro's been excused. Mayor Berger?
Present.
And Chairman Nash?
Here.
You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. I ask at this time if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have one minute of silence for all our responders.
Can we add Bert Reynolds' name?
No, we can't. Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor R. Reynolds, yes, isn't that? Oh, really? Yeah. Okay, next on our agenda, we have approval of minutes. I have the regular meeting of July 19, 2018. Eligible voters are Mr. Kuzek, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhaus, Mr. Seaman, Mayor Berger, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 19, 2018.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move down to resolutions that have to be memorialized. First one is case number SP-1045, C-like in Charlie, R-like in Robert, Howell Township Board of Education. It's a resolution for capital plan review and recommendation for ground-mounted solar array for Adelphia slash memorial schools. Eligible voters are Mr. Husser. I'm sorry, Nick.
We'll go Husser. It's buzzer with an H.
Okay. Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Seaman, Mayor Berger, and myself.
I make a motion to memorialize case number SP-1045 CR.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next is case number SP-1046, Bank of America, resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Mr. Husser, Mr. Russo, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion? Somebody?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to memorialize case number SP-1046, Bank of America.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next up is case number SP-996X, Quality Plaza LLC, resolution granting two one-year extensions of time. Eligible voters, Mr. Husser, Mr. Russo, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Seaman, and myself.
Make a motion to memorialize case number SP-996X.
Second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next up is case number SP-941A, like in Adam, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, resolution granting minor site plan and sign variance approval. Eligible voters, Mr. Husser, Mr. Russo, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass this.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to submission waivers.
Excuse me, Chairman, can we go back to correspondence for a minute?
Sure.
Because we have a couple things.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I forgot, yes.
The first item is a letter from Kenneth Patey, the attorney for Lanes Pond Developers LLC. They're on the agenda for this evening. He asked that it please be carried to October 18 without the requirement of renotice, excuse me, he agrees because of the extended period of time that he would renotice and republish. I believe they're trying to possibly change their plans, and that's what they want the extension for, so they would like to be carried to October 18.
What does our agenda look like for that night?
October 18 right now has nothing on it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Do you want to carry it?
Yes, Counselor, you want to make the announcement?
Well, he's going to renotice.
He's going to renotice, so it's just rescheduled.
If anybody's here for case number SD-2984, Lanes Pond Developers, that just block 27, Lot 5, Lanes Pond Road, that application is being carried to the October 18, 2018 meeting. The applicant has stipulated that it will renotice and republish for that meeting, so if you're within 200 feet, expect to receive a certified letter from that applicant.
Thank you. I also have a letter from Jan Wooters. He is the attorney for SL Homes, Inc., which is on the agenda tonight for Woodlands Management Approval. He asks that this application please be carried to September 20, Planning Board Public Hearing. He also granted an extension of time through October 31, 2018, for the board to act upon the application, and just today, or yesterday, I got revised Woodland Management plans in on that application.
All right, what do we look like for the 20th?
September 20, MACNOMY was carried to that date. Bank of America was scheduled for that date, and Gill Petroleum was scheduled for that date. So we already have three applications on. I don't know about MACNOMY. They were supposed to submit revised plans. I have not gotten anything. Laura hasn't gotten anything. They have until Monday to submit them, or they'll be off the agenda.
And Gill Petroleum, we've already carried a couple of times.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, put them on, but put them on at the end.
I did.
Okay.
And I told them there's a possibility that you might get reached.
Right.
Okay, if anybody's here for case number SP-1013WM, SL Homes, Inc., involving the property Block 143, Lot 23 and 24, US Highway 9 North, that application is being carried on notice to the regularly scheduled meeting of September 20, 2018, 7:00 PM, this room. There'll be no further notice. Again, it's being carried on notice September 20, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, Barbara Dixell, the villagers. The villagers' association is suing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're out of order?
SL Homes.
I'm sorry.
We are suing SL Homes.
Ma'am, 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 you're out of order?
Please do not give them Woodlands Management approval. We will see you in court on September 21st. Thank you.
Inappropriate, but...
That's just too late.
Okay.
We are suing you guys. Don't give them the approval for the Woodlands Management. We will fight it in court.
You do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next item, I sent two ordinances to the board members, I believe, on Wednesday. They were introduced at the council meeting on Tuesday, and we need to discuss and say whether they are in accordance with our master plan or substantially consistent with the master plan. We do have another meeting prior to the next council meeting if nobody has had a chance to read them yet, so it's up to you. I can tell you what they are if you want. One is entitled accessory buildings, where some of the accessory buildings, such as sheds, will not have to get permits and things like that. The other one is just the checklist for the development applications that go to both the Planning Board and the zoning board has been revised, and the reason for the revisions is that, number one, the Fire Bureau review fee has been taken off the fee schedule, and that was on the checklist. We removed that and added that the people have to let us know if there were any prior resolutions on their property that they're going to the board for, because that was an issue we had here at the Planning Board. And another item was, we had extensions of time on the checklist, and none of the categories on the checklist related to an extension of time, so nobody ever uses it for that, so we removed it. So those are your two ordinances.
So I don't know, I want to go around and poll the board, but I would feel more comfortable since there is not really a time constraint to act on it tonight, that we all have it in our email. If there's no objection, I'd like to carry this matter, both ordinances, to our next regular meeting. All right, Mr. Kuzek?
Yeah, that's fine. It was in our email on...
Wednesday.
It was in our email on Wednesday. Yeah. Somebody didn't get home from work until 2:00 in the morning, so... All right, Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yeah, I'm with you.
Mr. Russo?
Absolutely.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Whatever the majority...
That's fine, that's fine.
Yes, please.
All right, so...
I'll add them to the agenda items as well, okay? Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. All right, getting on to our normal business now. The first application we will hear tonight is case number SP-830-A, like in Adam III, Northeast Remsco Construction. It's amended preliminary and final site plan. This is a submission waiver. This application of Northeast Remsco Construction is applicant and Kuzes Properties LLC as owner seeking minor site plan approval to construct a maintenance and repair office building with warehouse space, a one-story warehouse building, a maintenance and repair shed, a one-story storage shelter structure, a fuel service area, canopy, and a paved parking area for 33 vehicles, and minor reconfiguration of existing site access drive on premises known as Block 49, Lot 26.01, Lakewood Farmingdale Road, County Road, Route 547. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Robert F. Munoz, Davidson, Eastman, Munoz, and I'm going to pay on on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this application was one that was approved in phases. One of the phases was to construct buildings closer to the roadway. That's what we're coming back for, we're configuring them slightly differently, and so on the checklist items that you have, most of these items were done at the original application. In fact, our stormwater management is in, and we did all the other things at that time. There's going to be no change in traffic. The operations will remain the same, there'll just be more that's inside, and we'll probably move our offices inside that are now in some trailers. And that's most of what A through E is about. On F, I'll be happy to get the descriptions if you need them. We had to consolidate our lots as a part of the prior approval, which we did do, but if you would like...
Mr. Munoz, if I could stop you. Usually, we ask our...
Okay, will we do it?
I'm going to try to streamline this for you. We usually ask our engineer to weigh in on this and to give the board her professional opinion, so if we can swear her in, please.
Laura, do you swear or affirm that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the submission waivers are specifically denoted in Item 4 of our July 25, 2018 report. I can let you know that G is not applicable because this is not a conditional use. As was just testified to, the descriptions can be provided that were subject to the prior application, but as it relates to A, B, C, D, E, and H, this is an amended application, although it looks like there's buildings and stuff that were proposed. It was all part of the original application and was contemplated with it and submitted at that time. So for the purposes of deeming the application complete, I take no exception to those waivers for that reason.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the board members have questions? None? Can...I'll just open it to the public momentarily.
Wait.
You don't have to open that.
I don't think submission waivers...
Submission waivers, we don't? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. With that being said, and my being corrected, I apologize. Do I have a motion from the board? Someone?
Well, I move that approval for submission waivers for case number SP-830-83.
I'll second that.
That was Chief Kudrick?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to hang around here, and I'll get back to you, I guess, while you hear the other application on our discussions before the meeting.
Okay, very good. Yeah, yeah, I agree. All right, the next application is case number SP-1027, 41 Randolph LLC. It's for preliminary and final major site plan. I'm going to read a portion of this because there's a lot of history here, which I don't need to go into. It's the application of 41 Randolph LLC as applicant, and Shlomo and Kyla Horowitz as owner seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a flex space facility consisting of five tenant units ranging in area from 9,946 square feet to 29,687 square feet of flex space area, all with associated office areas, employee break rooms, and loading areas on premises known as Block 38, Lot 4, 41 Randolph Road. And that's all I'm going to read.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. Just to bring the board up to speed...
Mr. Alfieri, can we just move that exhibit closer to, so the board can see it?
Oh, sure.
So it's a site play, actually, so we have that... Can we put it up on the screen?
Yes.
Just hold on, they're going to put it up on the screen.
I think Laura's not going to be able to see it. If I get the screen open.
I have to wait for that.
No other board members have watched the video and attested?
No, just Mr. Boyle and Mr. Husser both certified prior to, so I put them both on here as eligible voters, so there's six eligible voters this year.
Thank you. We were last here in May. Oh, it's still not on the screen. It's coming up. And at the May hearing, we had agreed to meet with the fire company that would handle any fires at this location. We have met with them. We've submitted revised plans in July to reduce the size of the building to minimize the variance relief that we were seeking and to address other comments. Since that time, we've also received a letter from the fire official of the town indicating that the plans are now approved, conditioned upon us providing public water, which we had agreed to do at a prior hearing. So, and we also provided traffic testimony, and that was concluded. So for the purposes of tonight, unless the board members have other questions or issues, I'm going to ask that our engineer, Mr. Ward, describe for the board what changes were made since the last meeting and to address some of the open issues such as lighting that were raised at the last hearing.
Mr. Alfieri, that's fire company 19-4, correct? Isn't that area?
Ramtown, the Ramtown one.
Yes, 19-4.
Yeah. Who did you meet with in the fire company?
The chief, and there were three or four people in the room. I honestly, I remember.
All right, but you did meet with the chief of the company?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I can confirm...
Although I was not present, I was invited to the meeting and did send a representative of my office to the meeting, so I can confirm that the meeting was held and that there were no issues arisen at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So Mr. Ward was previously qualified and sworn in and... Mr. Ward, do you acknowledge that you're still under oath? I do. Thank you. All right, Pat, would you describe for the board what changes we've made since the last public hearing, and in particular, what variance relief, how it was affected or minimized?
Sure. So the main change from last meeting is the building footprint itself. So we, hearing the board's comments about the previous request for the front yard setback, which was at 27 feet from Randolph, from the newly dedicated area of Randolph Road as part of this application, we have removed 30 feet of the building at the front of the property. So now, our proposed front yard setback went from 27 feet to 57 feet. 60 feet's required in the zone. The reason for the 57 feet is the 3x3 pilasters, which is an architectural feature on the facade of the building at the front, that we've proposed, and that was agreed to several meetings ago. Initially, we did not have that. And those are architectural projections, they're not usable floor area, and that is to meet the architectural guidelines for this specific zone. So with that, my engineering and planning testimony regarding the building setback would be still applicable, albeit it's a much less intense variance request. It's only 3 feet.
Is there any reason why you can't give us the three additional feet and eliminate the variance?
It comes down to not usable floor area. We would lose, that front facade of the building is a couple hundred feet long, I believe it's 300 feet long. By taking 300 feet off of that, you're taking more usable floor area off. The applicant, we discussed that, and we feel that the three-foot projection is a fair request, seeing as though we're complying with the architectural standards.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the building itself is located 60 feet. If you look, I just want to call to the board what we're talking about, these bumpouts that are on the front of the facade, that three foot to meet our ordinance code. So I do just want to indicate that a good majority, or the majority of this building is really 60 feet, but the bumpout is what's infringing in that three-foot area.
Thank you.
They'll look more like columns, you know, they're pilaster-shaped, so they're, again, to soften a 300-foot facade along Randolph Road, and we also provide that on...
Do we have an elevation available?
Oh, we do.
That Laura can put on the screen?
Sure.
So that isometric view that's on the middle-left part of the screen right there, that is the front of the building on that right side, so that there's a parapet to add some architectural featuring to it. The roof is not flat, it is a pitched roof, a gable roof, albeit a very low pitch, so the architect has designed that undulating parapet up top to kind of give it a more flat roof look, and that's why...
Does that look like two elevation changes taking place?
On the parapet?
Yeah, on the parapet.
Yeah, so it almost looks like it's separated, unit to unit that way, but that's not how any separation would be, that's just architectural, to make it so it's not one big box on Randolph Road. And again, this is setback 30 more feet, so...
And Mr. Ward, the other, there was also a question about the lighting intensity and the spilling, the potential spillage off-site, and have you looked into that?
Yes, I believe Mr. Tannenhaus brought that up about glare on Randolph Road as you're coming westbound. We looked at that, there's no foot candle readings in that where you would enter, or at least come into the view shed of the property. We actually consulted with the lighting vendor, Liberty Lighting. We had them come in, review our plans, and review our model. Their opinion, that was in June, on June 22, they came to our office, being as how from that particular lighting fixture that Mr. Tannenhaus was concerned about to where a driver would be viewing the property, it's over 100 feet away from that light feature, they felt like there would be no glare. Now, would you see the property lit? Of course you would, because it's nighttime, but in terms of glare or any impacts to drivers from the lighting, they found that there would be none, and we would agree with that.
As long as you're willing to put that on the record, I'm okay with that.
And then, the only other question I have, Mr. Ward, unless you have something to add, is that Ms. Newman did a report dated July 12. There were a few minor technical comments. We've agreed that we would address those comments.
Yes, I looked at those, and that's no problem, we worked out with Ms. Newman.
And in addition, and I know we testified to this previously, but Mr. Herman also did a report, and we mentioned at the last hearing that we would address his comments to his satisfaction as well.
Yes, and I think we addressed the majority, actually, most of them already, but any other lingering ones, if we have not addressed them at this time, we will, we will comply.
And was there anything else you needed to add as it relates to changes to the plans since the last hearing?
There's one item, I think Mr. Tannenhaus brought it up as well. It's about, now that we're connecting to public water, there's going to be either a meter pit or a water box on the property. At this time, not determined whether it's going to be a pit or a box, but we've located that on the site plan, identified it as such, and we have provided landscaping around it. So in the event that it's not a pit below grade, it's actually a box above grade, we have plantings around it to screen it from the view shed. So the color rendering actually shows the plantings around it a little bit clearer. But again, that was just to address that specific comment.
So I'd like to stop there, if you don't mind, for a second, just ask our professionals. So, Ms. Newman, since that is located in the right-of-way, that 60-foot setback, do you foresee any issues? I'm assuming we've got setbacks for reasons, in case the road needs.
A meter pit is typically below grade.
Meter pit, but it's not been confirmed if it's a meter pit or it'll be a hothouse above ground. So if it's above ground, what implications could that present in the future?
Well, it's not a principal structure, so I think it is permitted in the front yard area, and it does comply with the accessory structure setbacks, I believe, for the zone. Although as a utility, I don't think it's obligated to, because the water company is going to want to have the ability to access it. It's always been my understanding, I mean, this is actually pretty far off the right-of-way. Most water companies want them, if not within, just off the property so that they can go in and access them. So, you know, on this particular one, if this is where the, I would defer to the water company as to placement, but I don't have a concern relative to that, only because, I mean, we're talking, that is probably at least 50 feet off the right-of-way.
I'm just bringing it up in case Randolph Road ever has to get widened, I'm assuming that's why we have these setbacks.
Well, and that's also why they're giving us a dedication along the frontage, so they're giving us a dedication of right-of-way along their property, so that in the event that the road was widened, there wouldn't be an additional taking.
So how wide is that? I apologize for.
We're widening it too. We're adding a shoulder, as part of the application.
For not knowing those numbers.
So we're going to be 50 feet off the new property line, not the current property line. How much dedication have we given?
We're dedicating 30 feet. 30 feet, and then we're widening, we're adding a shoulder.
From center line.
From center line, right.
He's dedicating 30 feet from center line, so that being.
So you've got 20 feet in front of this building to put this box, is what you're saying?
No, we have 50 feet from the new dedicated line. So we're actually from the center line, we're about 80 feet from it with the box.
Correct. I was measuring 50 feet from the property line.
I guess on the rendering, you'll see the dot hatch.
Well, if you look at this, I like this better.
Okay.
So this is the center line of the road. Do you see where my pointer is?
Yep.
Okay, this is where, let's see, the new right-of-way line's going to be here.
Okay.
And the hot box is located here. So this is the new right-of-way line, it's about 50 feet to here, probably even a little bit more, that's where the building is.
If I could break it down in the layman's terms, the road won't get any wider than that new dedication line.
No, a 30-foot half width gives us a 60-foot cross-section, ultimately curb-to-curb, assuming the other side was widened.
Okay.
And that's what the master plan wants. That was one of Mr. Herman's comments, too.
Great, thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
I didn't bring anything else up?
No.
Mr. Alfieri, is there ballards on the parking areas next to the building?
That was one comment the board raised early on, one of our first meetings, and we revised the plans to accommodate for that, yeah.
The septic on the northern side of the property, the Leachfield area, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Are there floor drains that connect into that?
No, that's not permitted.
Okay.
Yeah, if there were to be any connections from the building, that requires a separate permit, a separate disposal area.
So it's just strictly sanitary?
This is sanitary septic, yep.
And the septic is, I was reading the, so I just want to make sure it's on the record, that's all. I was reading First Energy's requirements, and I saw that the septics are not permissible in their right-of-way. Is it, just want, for the record, it's not in the right-of-way?
Correct, it is outside, and it's shown, we have an area dedicated for that septic that's, we think, a little oversized, that's why we wanted to just be careful. It is outside the JCPenney right-of-way.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, at this time, I will open it up to the public. If anyone would like to come up and ask questions of the applicant's engineer, please step forward. So this is questions of the applicant's engineer. Statements will come in a couple of minutes.
Well, maybe you can hear my question and then decide if it's now or later.
You'll have to be sworn?
I'm Jerry Barron, and I'm 37, Dunellaway, in hell.
Sir, do you swear affirm that the testimony you provide the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
It was mentioned before about a meeting with the fire commissioner or something like that, and my question is, the last couple of times, there was concern about sending someone up a ladder with the electrical wire hanging down and everything. I'm just wondering how that got improved? Or is there still a concern? Is that good for now, or do we have to come back?
No, 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 that's a valid question.
Do you want to answer?
Sure. The concern was raised at the last meeting by former Argato, since he is actually a member of the Ramtown Fire Department. So his request was to meet with the fire company, and we did. We also had conversations with Chief Lewis, again, after that last meeting. We met with the commissioners, they offered no additional comments, and Chief Lewis offered no additional comments. You know, it's not in writing, but my conversations with Bob Lewis, he was not concerned about that specific problem. We feel, and actually, his rule of thumb is, you need to access the building within 150 feet on all sides, and we provide that here. There is no change to the plans as a result of the last meeting. I think we were seeking final blessing from the fire official, and we received the same. So that would be my answer.
So there's no more concern? It's everything solved?
We believe so, yes. I think former Argato was expressing concerns, but the commissioners deferred to the fire official of the town, and his report is clean. As long as we provide city water, then he's satisfied that the site, and the fire lanes and everything that he requested, he's satisfied that the site could be treated, a fire could be handled per his standards.
Well, I think one of the concerns Mr. Argato expressed is that he didn't want the commissioners, the fire commissioners, he wanted the chief of the company that would be responding to be the one that would weigh in on the adequacy of access, and that the overhead power lines weren't an issue. And I'm understanding from Mr. Alfieri and Mr. Ward, that at that meeting, the Fire Company 19-4 chief did not express a concern.
Right. And just to be clear, his initial and his consistent response was, we are going to defer to the fire official of the town who's paid to handle this. They didn't raise any objections, but he said, we're going to defer to him, and then his report came out clean. And his report was pretty clean, once we determined that we were going to provide city water, then your fire official was in good shape.
And this building is going to be sprinkled, correct?
Yes, it has to be. And that was why having that constant water source, rather than, you know, prior testimony was water storage tanks, and the location is same for the sprinkler system, that is no longer on the table, as we're now going to extend the water main and connect direct.
All right, thank you. All right. Would anyone else from the public like to step up and ask questions of the engineer? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of this. Mr. Alfieri?
That's all we have, Mr. Chair. We appreciate the board's input. The project evolved through a lot of inputs from the board members and the board professionals into a smaller project, but a much more practical project, and we would request that the board act favorable.
Mr. Chairman, how do we keep track of all of the things that were discussed and should be part of the resolution that the client agreed to, yeah, sorry, applicant agreed to, over the last several months?
I would say that Ron and Steve take very diligent notes, and so, in the resolution, I mean, and that's why they're sent around for everybody to review in a draft form, but the attorney goes through a process of drafting, puts all the notes in, including what conditions were agreed to, and ultimately.
Does Mr. Alfieri remember them all?
Yeah, you know what?
He keeps notes, too.
At my age, when I get home, I dictate a summary of this meeting as soon as I get home, because otherwise I forget. So I have pretty detailed notes of every meeting that I compare once I get the draft resolution, so yes.
Okay. So we will make sure that when we review the resolution, before we move on it, that we do capture everything that the board here can recollect.
Yeah, I know the three today were conditions of, it's conditional approval with, it would be conditional approval upon public water service being provided. That, now, is that, now?
Agreed to, and if, in the event that they don't have public water, they'd have to come back and amend this approval.
Now, let me ask you this question, just so that there's, the language is clear. Is it, is it upon condition of satisfaction upon supply of public water to the site, or upon adequate water to be provided to the site?
Public water. We're going to get it from, who's the?
American Water.
New Jersey American Water, we have to get the water through them. We've communicated with them, and we can get it there.
My only concern with this approval is leaving it open that way, is a flow test.
If I could kind of come in, I don't, I mean, they're extending water a substantial distance to get it to this site. They can't get a building permit without a sign-off from.
Let me go through my, just indulge me for a minute or two. So it is my understanding with fire service, there's two ways to get water to the site. There's water, and then there's water that's adequate to support the fire sprinkler system. And if the water happens to come back after you guys go through your testing, and it's not adequate to support, then we're back to a tank option.
No, then they have to come back for an amended approval. The representation here is that it's adequate to service the building from both a fire and a domestic standpoint.
That's why I wanted to.
Or can they come back with a fire pump?
That would require an amended approval if they needed a fire pump. The representation that they made is that they're extending public water that is adequate to supply both domestic and fire service to the building.
I'm assuming you've had the flow test performed.
No formal flow test, no formal application. I will say, and I was about to say that, we have engaged New Jersey American Water about this particular project. It's not something, we wouldn't just propose, let's connect to water without having a preliminary dialogue with the local rep. We gave them the building parameters, we described where the nearest tapping point would be, we asked if it was acceptable, we asked for domestic and for fire flows, if he thought it would be doable. And he agreed that, yes, this is something that's doable, submit formal permit applications, and we'll get the full review going.
And if we can't deliver that, then our approval is not valid, and we'd have to come back.
Yeah.
We have no issues, no doubt that that's.
You satisfied that the resolution will just have to make, state that kind of language, that's all.
Any other issues you'd like to?
No, that was the big one, I just didn't want a tank to come back.
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We didn't open it to the public, just don't want to forget that. We only had questions.
Right. Okay, that's why I let you make a statement. At this time, I will open it to the public. If anyone would like to come up, you can make a statement for, against the application, whatever you would like to say. Seeing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing. All right, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to make a motion to approve case number SP 102741 Randall LLC. Oh, I'd just like to, before we do that, the eligible voters are Mr. Boyle, Mr. Hussar, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhaus, and Mr. Seaman. I'll second the motion.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Hussar?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
And Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Patrick, are you going to take your?
I am. Okay. Mr. Chairman, based upon our discussions that we had beforehand, we'd like to get the clarification from DOT and come back during the hearing. I understand you have a nice, wide-open agenda on the 18th of October. But I do have a question for the, if we can take, we can talk about that, or I have a question before, I want to make sure I go back and get the right answer that you're looking for. Ms. Bono was nice enough to share this email with us, which I believe is the email that you're commenting on, is a little bit of confusion. Does, it appears that the DOT is taking, is asking the board to take, asking us to bring back the board's position, and then they'll give us their position. So I just want to clarify, to make sure what I'm going to go and ask the DOT for.
Ms. Newman?
Ultimately, what the DOT is requesting is that these lots be consolidated?
Well, that's not what it really sounds like it says. It sounds like it says they want to know whether or not the board's going to require them to be consolidated, or whether they remain too.
Well, what I can tell you is typically, I would recommend that the lots be consolidated.
Okay. Does the?
In general, this board, when we've done any, if you think about our applications on Route 9, anytime there's multiple lots, we ask that they be consolidated.
And I think you would want to consolidate it, because it eliminates some of the setback requirements on the separate lots.
We're okay, I think we're okay, we don't have any variances in this application, so.
Well, the fact of the matter is, the board would request that the lots be consolidated.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out, what the board's position would be, so that we would go to DOT with, at least what the board's position is, and we could then answer, you know, get an answer from DOT from there.
Okay.
But if I could have our application carried till October 18th, we'll get that, that'll give us plenty of time to get a position from DOT, and come back with, notify the board if we have to make any changes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, one other item that I want to make sure I get to put on the record is, I have reached out to the applicant's engineer this week, there's a pending zoning board application, and I need to ensure that, before a public meeting, I want to make sure that they're looking at the drainage between them. I've spoken with the zoning board engineer, there's some concerns relative to the filling of this site, the filling of that site, and mutually contraining, putting in a low spot, for lack of a better word. And because this board doesn't have the information that the zoning board has, and vice versa, Jack Mallon and I did communicate on that, and I just want to make sure that the board is aware that that's an issue, and that, when we carry this application, that also be addressed as well.
We're going to try, we're aware of that issue, Laura did let us know, and we're going to take care of it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Will all the comments from the Board of, the Monmouth County Board of Health, be addressed by the next meeting?
We're actually working on that, we may have to move our building slightly, we're working on that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've lost my bearings, I apologize. Is this the Bobcat application?
This is 999.
Yes, it is Bobcat.
Yes.
I know we haven't started testimony, but I just have a question, if they're going to see the DOT about Route 33 and the safety of it run over the facility?
Well, I think that that was the first comment. The DOT reached out to the board with a question, as Mr. Munoz indicated, he wanted our direction on that, so that he can proceed with the DOT.
So that would be appropriate, so.
Right, that's, I discussed this with Mr. Munoz before the meeting started, and there's a potential that because of the DOT only granting one site access point, that the site plan may have to get redesigned, plus there's Ms. Newman's concern about the drainage, and there's some other issues. I just thought it was beneficial that the board look at the site plan that encompasses all of that, rather than doing piecemeal testimony.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. I can state my concern if you like, maybe short-change that. So I was at the site, I stopped by the site on my way home from work today, coming eastbound on Route 33, and it was very difficult to make a left-hand turn into your facility, all the traffic coming up behind my rear. If there's an opportunity to widen that area and maybe create a turning ability, I'll leave it up to the board, but I thought it may be prudent, because it's a very narrow road there, I just didn't feel safe trying to make a left-hand turn into the facility.
Quite frankly, neither you nor we, neither you nor I have control over that, it's going to be DOT, they're going to tell us what they want.
Yes, he's correct.
I understand, but that's.
We'll have to do whatever they tell us to do.
It's an unfortunate fact.
I understand.
Yeah. Does the board have any?
Unless the chief feels that that is not a safe way of handling a left-hand turn.
We can't.
I'm with Mr. Munoz, and I can tell you this, if they didn't do it for the Fire Academy, with all that traffic that comes in and out of there, they're not going to approve it for a pay business.
I've made that turn at the Fire Academy many times myself, yes.
For many classes, right?
Is there any other input that the board would like to provide to Mr. Munoz, before we carry him and send him off on his way? So can we, is the, we can put him on for October 18?
October 18.
Be carried without further notice?
Yes, Mr. Munoz, before we carry it, will the applicant consent to extend the board's time of decision until November 30th, 2018?
Sure. Right? Yes.
That's a yes?
That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, for case number SP-1042999, Route 33 LLC, which is otherwise known as Block 183, Lot 25.01, and 27.02, this application is being carried on notice to the board's regularly scheduled meeting of October 18th, 2018, 7:00 PM in this room. There will be no further public notice. This, the application has been carried on notice to October 18th, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess that's all the items we have on our agenda for tonight. Mr. Russo and myself have conferred, at this point, we don't have guidance from the council about what's going to be the next element on the master plan. So, I lean, I would like to, as we did for last month, hold in abeyance the fact that we're going to probably cancel the September Master Plan Committee.
And that would be after our next meeting, so I'll wait to post it till then.
That'll give us sufficient time. Okay. Any, any need to go into executive session? With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.